Sorry. Okay.
Uh, Councilor Coso.
Present.
Councilor Beal.
Here.
Mayor Pritchett Woodruff.
Here.
Mary Ozzy.
Here.
And Councilor Gonzalez.
Uh.
First item on the agenda is the reading of the In- to- this land acknowledgement. You have a supporting. The judge. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on capital improvement project updates. Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Laura Rick from Public Works. And I did bring show and tell. I don't want to disappoint you guys, so. Here's a piece of our digester. The liner that fell off of it. Welcome to come. It's clean. I promise it's clean. They disinfected it, so. Okay. So the first thing that we're going to talk about is just the, uh, a capital project lifecycle. So what happens from beginning to end? We've talked about that we're shifting to a cradle-to-grave concept for capital projects. But what does that really mean? So. Project initiation is the inception of the project. We know we need it. It has come up in a master plan or it's come up literally bubbling out of the ground. Uh, but we know that the project needs to happen. Next, we're going to form a project team and have an initial scoping meeting. And this initial scoping meeting is really important because it tells us who needs to be on the project team. Essentially, we're going to get all the chefs in the kitchen. Figure out, do you have something in this location? Do you have something in this location that needs to be fixed? And depending on who kind of has skin in the game at that point, they're going to be on the project team. So if a project does not need for, say, uh, landscaping, there's no landscaping in it at all. Then our landscape architect doesn't really need to be on the team. But otherwise, might involve streets, water sewer, uh, multimodal, um, uh, transit. It could involve transit. So those people, those divisions or departments would be on the project team throughout the course of the project. So then the project team is going to work together with finance to create an RFP or an RFQ, depending on the process that we're going to go through, and contract a designer. And keep in mind that this format for this lifecycle is pretty specific to a design bid-build-delivery format. It's, it could change depending if we do a design-build or a construction manager-at-risk or CMAR delivery method. So it just depends on the project itself. But there's generally three stages of design review, thirty, sixty, ninety percent. Design review at thirty percent, it's mostly conceptual. Major changes can be made at this point, uh, for the design itself. Then at sixty percent, we're really just doing minor changes at this point. And at ninety percent, no more major changes, rare minor changes and just fine tuning the design. Making sure everybody's on the same page, getting construction documents ready. And then we, at that point, get the engineer's estimate of probable cost. So once the design is complete, the project team then again works with finance to get invitation for bid documents out. The project goes out to bid, um, contractors decide upon, and then we go under contract with the contractor. And we get the start of construction going. So basically, once the construction starts, the project team kind of steps back. And the CIP project manager and the inspectors take over during the construction phases. We as, you know, if the project team is needed, we would come in and make sure that the design is followed. Codes and standards are followed, um, all the way through construction completion. So. At construction completion, the project team comes back in and we make sure that the project was completed to our specifications, um, to our expectations and our satisfaction. We'd close out any outstanding items. And then the project would be turned over to the owning department, whether that's streets or Public Works in general or multimodal transit, parks and rec, whatever it is. But as part of that cradle-to-grave concept, we've got to mention that with asset management of these capital assets, there's going to be routine maintenance operations of it through its useful lifecycle, whatever the asset is. Once it reaches the end of its useful service life, this whole cycle starts again. Okay? All right, moving on. So we're going to talk about multiple fund projects first, or those projects that are utilizing multiple funds. So each of these slides just has whatever projects will highlight are bold and then their status. So there's a little legend there that tells you what the status is. Um, since we won't be covering Junction Street, just a little heads up why it's yellow. Uh, it's in the on schedule, but with caution because the scope of the project was expanded to be a full reconstruction project. So kind of late in the game, we added utilities to the scope. So that slowed down the rest of it to make sure that the design of utilities could catch up. And then the project will move forward from there. All right, the utilities master plan. Uh, we're currently in the contracting process with a selected firm. And the project is, is expected to continue through the fall of 2026. It's going to be very involved between the design firm and our operations staff. We're collaborating with multiple divisions and departments within the city to ensure that the end product is going to serve the city and the community well into the future. And because the project scope is quite large, including water and sewer treatment, water distribution and sewer collections, the budget will need to be increased in 2026. So you'll see that coming up soon. But that does fit in with our expectations, expanding the scope to involve all of that. Um, and also because contracted services are generally increasing in costs. County Road 250, 251 is moving ahead on schedule. As of this morning, the crews had milled up, uh, 250. And they're going to begin working from south to north on 250 from like the Tarmigan Center where bread is, moving up toward the Metz Lane intersection. So there's been multiple utility conflicts with this project. We had to move water lines, gas lines, power lines, communication lines. Um, and finding the best method of traffic control has been difficult, especially coordinating with North College and doing the intersection at Holly in Florida has been difficult. North College reconstruction, uh, that's also moving along on schedule with, but it's yellow. Uh, because we've had just consistent underground conflicts like the picture here, another different boulder. Um, lots of deep trenches and the soils there are very unstable. So we've had a lot of collapsing trenches, which is very dangerous for the crews, obviously. So keeping the road open and also keeping the crews safe has been difficult because you got to make a big wide area for the crews, but you still need to be able to fit cars through. So that's been a difficulty, but still trucking along with that one. Um, the, the roads all milled up, all the underground utilities are complete. They're working on curb gutter and sidewalks now. They'll be paving end of August with significant completion in September. All right, College and Eighth Road Diet is behind schedule, but it's expected to begin this month. July twenty eighth is their start date. They'll probably begin mobilizing the week before that. Um, the project's been delayed a couple of times due to funding challenges, long lead times for the traffic control components that are going to be going in. The project, though, is in collaboration with multimodal. And we were able to utilize the same contractor for this project, Durango Mesa and West Ninth Street. So that really reduced the costs for the mobilization fees that we incurred. All right, so 2019 fund projects. Um, just quickly, the Block Fifty Five project, it's yellow here. We won't be talking about it, but it's on schedule with caution just because the underground utility, uh, potholing revealed that the sewer main had separated, settled and separated from all of the service lines. So surprise inclusion in the design is now we got to include a sewer line in that project. So it delayed it a bit. Um, and also the sidewalk improvement program is red.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation on capital improvement project updates. Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Laura Rick from Public Works. And I did bring show and tell. I don't want to disappoint you guys. So here's a piece of our digester. The liner that fell off of it. You're welcome to come. It's clean. I promise it's clean. They disinfected it. So, okay. So the first thing that we're going to talk about is just the, a capital project lifecycle. So what happens from beginning to end? We've talked about that we're shifting to a cradle to grave concept for capital projects. But what does that really mean? So project initiation is the inception of the project. We know we need it. It has come up in a master plan or it's come up literally bubbling out of the ground. But we know that the project needs to happen. Next, we're going to form a project team and have an initial scoping meeting. And this initial scoping meeting is really important because it tells us who needs to be on the project team. Essentially, we're going to get all the chefs in the kitchen, figure out, do you have something in this location? Do you have something in this location that needs to be fixed? And depending on who kind of has skin in the game at that point, they're going to be on the project team. So if a project does not need for say landscaping, there's no landscaping in it at all. Then our landscape architect doesn't really need to be on the team. But otherwise, might involve streets, water sewer, multimodal transit. It could involve transit. So those people, those divisions or departments would be on the project team throughout the course of the project. So then the project team is going to work together with finance to create an RFP or an RFQ, depending on the process that we're going to go through. And contract a designer. And keep in mind that this format for this lifecycle is pretty specific to a design bid build delivery format. It's, it could change depending if we do a design build or a construction manager at risk or C Mar delivery method. So it just depends on the project itself. But there's generally three stages of design review, 30, 60, 90% design review. At 30%, it's mostly conceptual. Major changes can be made at this point for the design itself. Then at 60%, we're really just doing minor changes at this point. And at 90%, no more major changes, rare minor changes and just fine tuning the design. Making sure everybody's on the same page, getting construction documents ready. And then we, at that point, get the engineer's estimate of probable cost. So once the design is complete, the project team then again works with finance to get invitation for bid documents out. The project goes out to bid, contractors decide upon, and then we go under contract with the contractor. And we get the start of construction going. So basically, once the construction starts, the project team kind of steps back. And the CIP project manager and the inspectors take over during the construction phases. We as, you know, if the project team is needed, we would come in and make sure that the design is followed. Codes and standards are followed all the way through construction completion. So at construction completion, the project team comes back in and we make sure that the project was completed to our specifications, to our expectations and our satisfaction. We'd close out any outstanding items. And then the project would be turned over to the owning department, whether that's streets or Public Works in general, or multimodal transit, parks and rec, whatever it is. But as part of that cradle to grave concept, we've got to mention that with asset management of these capital assets, there's going to be routine maintenance operations of it through its useful lifecycle, whatever the asset is. Once it reaches the end of its useful service life, this whole cycle starts again. Okay? All right, moving on. So we're going to talk about multiple fund projects first, or those projects that are utilizing multiple funds. So each of these slides just has, whatever projects we'll highlight are bold and then their status. So there's a little legend there that tells you what the status is. Since we won't be covering Junction Street, just a little heads up why it's yellow. It's in the on schedule, but with caution. Because the scope of the project was expanded to be a full reconstruction project. So kind of late in the game, we added utilities to the scope. So that slowed down the rest of it to make sure that the design of utilities could catch up. And then the project will move forward from there. All right, the utilities master plan, we're currently in the contracting process with a selected firm. And the project is, is expected to continue through the fall of 2026. It's going to be very involved between the design firm and our operations staff. We're collaborating with multiple divisions and departments within the city to ensure that the end product is going to serve the city and the community well into the future. And because the project's scope is quite large, including water and sewer treatment, water distribution and sewer collections. The budget will need to be increased in 2026. So you'll see that coming up soon. But that does fit in with our expectations, expanding the scope to involve all of that. And also because contracted services are generally increasing in costs. County Road 250, 251 is moving ahead on schedule. As of this morning, the crews had milled up 250. And they're going to begin working from south to north on 250 from like the Tarmigan Center where bread is, moving up toward the Mets Lane intersection. So there's been multiple utility conflicts with this project. We had to move water lines, gas lines, power lines, communication lines. And finding the best method of traffic control has been difficult, especially coordinating with North College. And doing the intersection at Holly in Florida has been difficult. North College reconstruction, that's also moving along on schedule with, but it's yellow. Because we've had just consistent underground conflicts like the picture here, another different boulder. Lots of deep trenches and the soils there are very unstable. So we've had a lot of collapsing trenches, which is very dangerous for the crews, obviously. So keeping the road open and also keeping the crews safe has been difficult because you got to make a big wide area for the crews, but you still need to be able to fit cars through. So that's been a difficulty, but still trucking along with that one. And the, the roads all milled up, all the underground utilities are complete. They're working on curb gutter and sidewalks now. They'll be paving end of August with significant completion in September. All right, College and Eighth Road Diet is behind schedule, but it's expected to begin this month. July 28th is their start date. They'll probably begin mobilizing the week before that. The project's been delayed a couple of times due to funding challenges, long lead times for the traffic control components that are going to be going in. The project though is in collaboration with multimodal and we were able to utilize the same contractor for this project, Durango Mesa and West Ninth Street. So that really reduced the costs for the mobilization fees that we incurred. All right, so 2019 Fund Projects. Just quickly, the Block 55 project, it's yellow here. We won't be talking about it. But it's on schedule with caution just because the underground utility potholing revealed that the sewer main had separated, settled and separated from all of the service lines. So surprise inclusion in the design is, now we got to include a sewer line in that project. So it delayed it a bit. And also the sidewalk improvement program is red. That is behind schedule. Staff is currently developing a path forward for that program. And we're improving, currently proving sidewalks in tandem with other street projects that are happening. All right, so Block 54, the, it's currently on schedule. New curb and gutter is complete and their grading is nearly nearing completion. The paving is going to occur soon and the drainage will be installed in the center of the alley after the pavement is done. We faced a couple of similar challenges with this project, one of which is getting consistent grades in the alley so that we have proper drainage. And needing to redesign the curb ramp to be ADA compliant. Again, utility conflicts needed to move an LPE pole, power pole. The ADA ramp installation project is on schedule. We're in close coordination with multimodal and streets for this particular project. Every time you touch the pavement, basically, you need to upgrade the ramps to ADA compliance. So pairing these projects together and making sure that they're all coordinated is really important to do. Some challenges is that the existing terrain in the city makes it difficult to get the right grades for the ADA ramps. And since these are pretty small projects, it's hard to get bids on them. The contractors want larger projects to bid on. So doing a couple ADA ramps here and there is not really something they'd like to bid on. All right, West Ninth Street Mill and Overlay, you guys have probably driven it. It's nice and smooth now. Project is complete. So the work was completed with minimal disturbances to the local businesses, City Market, TBK Bank and other businesses along there. Had to work with the contractor that was doing the work over by Toatin and Brown Shoe Fit. Because they were using that space for their material storage. But all worked out great and it, and it turned out really well. The challenges there was the road profile was really variable. It was two inches thick in some places and five inches thick in other places. So getting that all even before we laid down new pavement was a challenge. Okay, Water Construction Fund, we do have a lot of red projects here, but going to go over a couple of them. The 3 million gallon tank, that's a big project. It is behind schedule because of complicated design that's involved in that. To make sure that we're meeting drinking water regulations. The design itself has to go through many iterations of design review from us, from CD PHE, to make sure that we're meeting disinfection contact time, basically. A lot of fluid dynamics modeling and it's just taken longer than expected. The 160 water line replacement is delayed because the scope increased from, we were just going to do RUSA to the tech center. But now we're actually going to be designing RUSA all the way to the Speedway Gas Station up on 160, just doing the whole thing. So putting out a request for qualifications and RFQ soon for that project. And because the 3 million gallon tank project is delayed, the 7 million gallon tank rehab project has been pushed back. Obviously, one has to happen before the other one can happen. So once the 3 million gallon tank is in construction, the rehab design will be completed on the other tank. And the Train One Improvements Design, that's been pushed to 2026 to complete the preliminary engineering and feasibility study, which is wrapping up right now. And then the Florida Pipeline Stabilization Project, oh, we will, we will cover that one. So get there in just a minute. All right, Rock Ridge Pump Station Replacement, this one is behind schedule, although it is moving forward. We are putting out bids, believe this week, or if not, if it didn't already happen today. But behind because we had, it's a long lead time for the design and the construction of this pump station. It's kind of a set in place. So it's pre manufactured, comes on a truck and you just set it in place. So it usually takes about a year to construct it and then they send it. So also a challenge was that we were not able to accommodate public feedback concerns for the backup generation that needs to happen at this pump station. There was a request for a natural gas generator, but we can't accommodate that too to safety reasons. So we have to go with a diesel generator. Yeah, I'm moving quickly only because I have a lot to go through, but.
Just keep your list. Yeah, you go ahead.
Market will come back. All right, the Florida Pipeline Reconstruction Design is on schedule. This is another very large project that we did a RFQ for requests for qualifications. And we have a chosen firm and we just had our first scoping meeting for that. And they've provided us their scope of work and initial fee schedule. We are going out for grants for this project to help with the costs. This is another one where the operations staff is heavily involved on the design team. And because the scope is increasing just from rehabbing the old pipe to constructing a new pipe, it's costing a lot more than we were initially expecting. So it may require bond funding for this particular project. All right, Sky Ridge Tank Liner Replacement, these are the water tanks up on the ridge above Hillcrest and Sky Ridge. They're the ones that are buried. So not the, not the above ground tanks. The liner in these ones failed. The East Tank is done and the West Tank is next. So it had in there basically like a pool liner, like that you could just lay in there. That was removed. And the reason that it's yellow is because when they removed it, they, they realized that the concrete behind it needed to be refinished because the new liner that's going in is a spray on liner. So it would not stick to the concrete the way it was. So we are doing a mid-year adjustment for that change in cost. So you guys will see that later. The other challenges besides the concrete was after the East Tank was completed. When we filled it up, it was leaking through the pipe penetration. So just needing to replace the seals around there. And of course, long lead time on those things, but they should be here soon. All right, Florida Pipeline Stabilization Project, this one, you can see the budget at 220,000 and what it actually costs to do it. So we ended up finding a contractor that was already working in the area. He had spoils from another project. So he was able to just move his equipment over and use the spoils from the other project. So it was free for us, which reduced the cost significantly. We didn't have to pay for mobilization and we didn't have to pay for materials. So we really just paid for labor. So completed way ahead of schedule and way under budget. So it was a unicorn. All right, Sewer Construction Fund, again, quite a bit of red here. So the, we will go over the bold ones, but the Eighth and Eighth Sewer Replacement Project, that one's delayed because that scope was increased to a full reconstruction project instead of just doing the sewer. We're doing water, sewer, street, sidewalk, all of it. So that one is continuing into, into design right now. Lightner Creek Lift Station Replacement, initially it was proposed to just be a like and kind replacement. Take the old one out, put a new one in. CD PHE regulations have changed. Also, we are calculating the flow in the future from 160 West that comes down and goes into this lift station. The growth on 160 has outgrown the capacity of that lift station. So we need to upgrade the lift station to a larger one. The, the new regulations require a bunch more design and site assessment stuff. So basically the scope of that is increasing. The Sewer Main Replacement on Florida Road by Riverview has been pushed next year. Again, due to an increase in scope of the project. That's the one where the sewer line runs right underneath the Island Cove Mobile Homes. And we need to move that sewer line out into a right of way so that we have easy access to it. And we're going to piggyback off of some fiber as well to run to a lift station. All right, Santa Rita Entrance Road Project, this one is a bit frustrating because it's just been stuck. So initially, this was budgeted last year. It was pushed in this, and the scope was actually reduced to only focus on the safety issues of getting big trucks into Santa Rita and around that 90 degree turn by the sculpture. So that and then completely decommissioning the old dump station, the sewer dump station. So we've had project delays due to budgeting and mostly permitting. So the C dot right of way permitting is taking much longer than expected. It was only expected to take about three weeks and that was in March. So we've been delayed for quite a while. The Septage Receiving Station at Santa Rita is on schedule with caution. It's currently out to bid, but no one showed up at the prebid. So that's why it's with caution is we, we might have trouble with people actually, contractors actually bidding on this project. And it may be too late in the year now to start this project. Okay, so here's one of our good successes as well, the Santa Rita Digestor Relining. It was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. We ended up replacing a valve in between the two digestors. This was the one that we presented many months ago, but it was like a 50 cent part that failed. But it was like 16 feet underground and cost $20,000 to get to. So, but those are all new. The digestors are replaced, they're refilled, they're online. So that was a great success doing it ahead of schedule and under budget. And lastly, the primary sledge pump replacement, this one's behind schedule. It is expected to start in the fall. The pumps that are coming have an extremely long lead time. It was much longer than we expected. So project was actually supposed to be completed in 2024, but due to the equipment lead times, it was pushed to this year and now expected in the fall. Okay, now I can answer questions.
Okay, we're going to have to go back to the utility master plan. And I've got several questions. So Mayor, just move, move me around as you need to on this. On the utility master plan, the rate increase follow-up. There was a mention of a rate and rate study must be completed at the end of process. We'll need to increase rates in the interim. So can you explain that just a little bit more? I'm not quite sure what that sentence meant.
So as, as part of the master plan, there will be a rate study, a comprehensive rate study for water and sewer, but that's not till the tail end of the master plan. So that's expected to be probably August to October of 2026. However, we have, we know that we need to raise rates in the interim to ensure that we have enough funding for operations and capital projects between now and then. So we are looking at, I guess, short-term increase for sewer rates in particular, likely not water rates at this time, but that's to be determined.
Would the thinking be that it would be probably not the full, what a study might tell us we need? And it would be something that would be a little bit smaller, whatever. We're not going to increase it above and then decrease.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. How much did the last master plan cost and how long ago was it? If you have those, that's great. If not, would love to get that.
Find the price.
Okay.
The last master plan was only water. It was in 2021.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm onto the Streets project next.
Okay, which one?
Sidewalk Improvement, the sidewalks that are in need of work, but not on a road in need of repair. How do we fix those sidewalks currently? This is probably a broader process question.
That is a broader.
Okay.
Broader question that I do not have the answer to right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
How would I go about?
We can follow up with you on that though.
Okay, so would be interested in sidewalks that aren't paired with a road that needs it. How do we deal with those? Thank you. And is there any times that we've got ADA ramp work that's expanded to include the sidewalk? So that a small project like an ADA ramp is, then all of a sudden we've got a troubled sidewalk as well? And we can make that project big enough to be worth the contractor's time?
I believe so, but that'll be part of our follow-up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, could I just add something?
Sure.
There used to be a sidewalk retention plan for the city to repair sidewalks. Could you also put that into research when you do that? It was a while back because I remember it was mentioned at one of the Fab meetings.
Okay.
Is that the sidewalk replacement 50-50 program?
Right, the 50-50 program.
Sure, yes. And that program was essentially dissolved because there was not a whole lot of success with the program itself. And we can give you some information with our follow-up.
Well, when I used to live on the South Side, I did the 50-50 program on a corner lot and it was a real good success.
I guess on the whole, we could say, not as successful as we were hoping it to be.
I think in the last like five years, it was like two people used it or something. And so we asked them, I want to say a year ago, year and a half ago, to go back out and see if there's a way we can do it with better utilization. Like do, is it 25-75 and just less than, you know, like just to make it more utilized or something. And so.
All righty, well, do your thing.
Any other?
Do you have any more?
Oh, I do. Thank you, Mayor. The 3 million gallon tank delays, I know this is going to be a domino for the 7 million gallon tank delay. Is there other dominos after that? I can't remember on the water plant tour if there was a lot.
Those are the only two big projects up there that are, that related. There may be some impacts to the plant expansion phasing for that. But the plant's expansion is more focused on the pretreatment and not the kind of final steps of the treatment process.
Okay. And I appreciate that you only know about the big, the big projects and yeah, what might be happening with our plant or the water plant. Okay, Florida Pipeline, I'm a little hazy. Is this a piece of this long discussed redundancy line for our water supply?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, we actually had a break today on the pipeline.
Oh, okay.
Timely.
Is this redundancy or is this just replacing the current?
This will be redundancy. The, the initial scope was, right. The initial scope was to rehab the existing pipe because of the just unknown condition of it and whether or not we should rehab it. But rehabilitating the pipe does not offer any redundancy of our primary drinking water source. And so installing a redundant pipeline right next to it and then afterwards, looking at, doing an assessment and potential rehabilitation. So we could have two going the same direction. That's our thought process.
If I can pick my fellow councilor's brains, this is the former mayor Dick White and some other folks have been pushing hard for a redundant line. Is this the solution to that concern? As best as you know?
I believe the ones that are pushing harder are going to be for the Lake Night Horse is the redundancy.
Correct, right. Yes.
And that's a, that would not be solved by this and that'd be an entirely different project.
If it was specifically coming from Lake Night Horse, but this does provide redundancy, we're going to have a new number in regards to how much water we can have in a drought. Got it. So they're looking for a different.
Correct.
Good point. Okay.
Correct.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you very much.
This is, is just because the current pipeline is over 70 years old and we've had so many breaks on it. It's our primary source. If we have to treat only the animus, there, it triggers some other things with CD PHE regarding corrosion control and increased monitoring for lead and copper. It's a whole thing. So.
Fair to say that it's redundant for the line and not necessarily for the water supply?
It's redundant for the Florida water supply.
Got it.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, so if you do the redundant line and rehab on the other line, can you do them at the same time?
No, it will, we need to maintain service on that line. There are other raw water users on that line, like Yoot Pass. Pulls off of there. And so we can't have that line down for more than three days. Yep.
Good point. The Sewer Construction Fund, oh, no, I did want to highlight the stabilization way under budget. I love that you put in like $56 sometimes when that's all. And I love that you're tracking to that level and you're showing that. So thank you very much. Sewer Construction Fund, there's multiple delays on that slide. Is this typical of this time of the year? Is this typical for the, just the way that sewer construction goes? I guess I was just trying to look at what, what were some of the issues?
It was just how it happened.
Okay.
This, this year where it happened in the sewer fund rather than the water fund or 2019 sales tax.
Okay.
Just the, the project, specifically that particular project.
Okay, there's not a seasonality to this stuff in regards to delays typically?
Not typically.
Okay, thanks. One more question. Can we link small projects together that contractors? Can we link small projects together that contractors typically don't build on? Do you tend to use the same contractor even for not the same projects? And so you can link together $350,000 project and a couple AD ramps and whatever else might be small to make it a package?
It's possible. Yeah, we do have the ability to use on call contractors for some projects. I believe it's now up to $250,000 for on call contracted services for design or construction. So that yes, that is possible. And we are trying to bid projects like combining them into one so that we receive more bids. At Eighth and College is a great example of that. I believe Sarah can talk to that way better than I can. But yeah, combining projects is always better to get more bids on.
That's great. All right. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay.
Questions? I just have one question. Okay, so for the rehab on the 3 million and $7 million water tank rehab up there. What's your main hang up? Is it just money or we're just because this is we, when I got in council, we were talking about it. I'm sure they've been talking about it for a while.
It's been a long, long time.
Okay, so what is the main hang up?
The the biggest hang up is the design of it, making sure that it's meeting the drinking water regulations. And ensuring that it's everything that we need operationally to, because it's not just building a new tank. It's, it has to work for our operations because we only have one plant, so we have to keep it running. We have to meet regulations while under construction. Similar situation to when Santa Rita was rehabbed and upgraded. They still had to keep the lights on and keep the sewage flowing during construction. So to answer the question shortly, it's the design has been the hang up.
All righty, just one question. Okay, so this is not a new science. This has been going on for years. So why besides the regulations from the state and the federal government, why has it taken so long to get a design?
So lots of things had to happen prior to the design starting. And we've been talking about like underground investigation. The the plant grounds up there are just riddled with underground pipes that are abandoned, that are in service. So there was probably four or five years of just doing underground investigation and picking a site for the tank that would work hydraulically. So that was a big part of it as well. Lots of pre projects that needed to happen before the design actually started. And those projects started in 2012. So it's been going for a long time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll follow up with the sidewalk information. Okay, thank you. Okay, multimodal.
I'm okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Council. Sarah Hill, Transportation Director. I just have seven multimodal projects that are funded through the 2015 half cent. And if it pleases Council, I'll just get through the slides and then take questions at the end if that works. All right. So the Rusa Connect project is on schedule. This project is installing a six foot sidewalk on the east side of Rusa from the Ninth Street Bridge up to El Paso Street. And it's also installing a bike lane and improvements to all the intersections. We have had a lot of community support for this project. We got to 90% design. We have a grant for just about 950,000 that's going to help fund the construction. And then updates made to the design actually did bring the cost estimate for construction down quite a bit as well. So last year or during budget season, we had originally budgeted design and construction as one package, thinking there was a chance that we might be able to do a design build. And that's why you'll see that the budget is $2.2 million. We are facing the challenge of C dot's lengthy clearance process, which was the main holdup for that. But for design, we're still on track. We're going to have the bid documents out this fall. And so this one will be a construction next year. The North Main ADA Improvement Project, we are on schedule with caution. We have reached 90% design and again, had a successful community engagement process for this one. This project is improving sidewalks and transit stops on North Main all the way from 17th Street up to Animus Few Drive. The schedule is cautionary because there are quite a high volume of right of way acquisition and temporary construction easements that we're going to need to obtain before we get to construction. There's over 90 of those. So we're going to be working with property owners for the remainder of this year and getting getting those solidified. We're working really closely with C dot. This is mainly NC dot's right of way. So we're moving forward with this one on schedule with a construction estimated in we're anticipating construction in 2027. So then downtown's next step design, we are on schedule to have a design and cost estimate early 2026 for you. We just wrapped up the community engagement meetings in June and we'll be reporting on the feedback of what we heard during that process at the July 22 Engage Durango Forum. I think one of the successes of this design has been really cross departmental collaboration and focus. And then also just really high volume of community engagement. We're getting some really rich feedback from people. It is a challenging project also for that reason and the complexity of the design. There's so many different elements within it. But we are on schedule to deliver design documents to you. Camino Crossing, this project is building a pedestrian and bicyclist underpass of Camino del Rio at 12th Street. Design was originally funded in 2021, which is why I have it beyond behind schedule here. Bless you. At that time, the location of the new downtown fire station had not yet been determined. So when city council did approve the sale of the River City Hall property to the DFPD to build, we paused the design of the underpass so that they could develop their site plan and move forward with construction. So now that that's in its final stages, we have resumed design and we're going to begin community outreach later this year. This project has a lot of community support. It is very complex. There's a lot of utilities conflicts right in the project scope. But we are looking forward to starting to face some of those challenges and get the design back on track. West Park Traffic Calming, this project is on schedule. It's another cross departmental collaboration. We are actually going to address utilities, streets and the multimodal improvements all at the same time. So there's a significant amount of community support from the residents there. It will calm traffic on West Park from El Paso up to North Main and improve the intersections within there. There's a couple really kind of confusing, almost merging like intersections within that scope that we're going to clean up and improve safety on. Yeah, it is. It's West Park and 17th. So where the like the Triangle Park is there across from the Library Park. Let's see. Lastly, we have the Midtown Safety and Connectivity. This is ahead of schedule. We reached 90% design. We have a construction cost estimate. So we are applying for grants to help offset the eventual cost of construction, which is 2.1 million. Our outstanding challenge of this one is a structural concern. On 13th Street, there's a property that has stairs in the sidewalk. It just changed ownership. So we're working with the new owners to find a solution there that meets the ADA. Uh, oop, one more, sorry. Junction Street on schedule with caution. Laura brought this up from the public works perspective as well. We have reached the 60% design for the multimodal component of this, and that will install a shared use path from West Second Avenue up to Dolla Mountain Park. Significant neighborhood support. We actually had a round of applause at the last neighborhood meeting we had, which never happens for us. So we're very, we love this one. The caution is that we have had to slow down the process in order to allow utilities and streets to catch up with their design as well. And that is all that I have for you and happy to take questions.
Yeah.
Got any? Yeah, I have a few. I don't know. We'll just, I just have a couple for the next step design. And then maybe everyone can ask for a next step. And then if you have a different project or something, right? Okay. Early 2026, we'll have a cost estimate done. Will we have a utility cost then too?
Yes.
And a preliminary light parking garage, parking garage options?
We will have, I am issuing a request for information for the cost of that study for the next, for the 2026 budget year. So that will be happening within
A little bit.
2026.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Anyone else on next step?
Yeah, just a clarification on that. I'm ignorant of the parking garage process. I know it's been mentioned, but can you just refresh what is?
Yeah, I think kind of so that council can have just the holistic conversation with actual numbers. We were going to get feasibility and a cost estimate of a parking garage structure in the central business district. So I have to issue the request for information from vendors who would be interested in giving us a proposal for that type of a feasibility study. And so that way, when we have the construction cost estimates for downtown next step, we would also have some information about a future cost for a parking garage should our parking vacancy warrant that need.
So is the parking garage feasibility study, was that budgeted in 2025? Is there not much budget there?
No, that will be, we'll be requesting budget in 2026 for it. We were hoping to be able to request a midyear adjustment this year. But we have been unable to get the request for information out in time for that.
Great, thank you.
The resolution that was passed by council included the design of next steps and with a cost estimate, utilities with a cost estimate, and then the parking garage like options potentially, just so we could get a full idea of the scope and make informed decisions. That was kind of the intention behind it.
Right. I just have one question. Will the cost estimate for the parking garage be on the current location of the transit station? Because that was planned many years ago to make that a parking garage.
Yeah, that's part of the request for information packet we're putting together. There's a couple, I think there's three locations that had been spoken about in the last 20 years as potential locations. So we're all of the information that we have that's already been done towards a potential parking garage, we're including it in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Will we get a summary of as council of all the meetings that happened?
Absolutely.
For our next steps and like the community engagement, just kind of, I mean, I went into a couple, but I couldn't make it to all of them. And so it would be nice to kind of get it all compiled.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, Sarah. So just to pile on that one, we've got a community meeting on July 22. So we'll, how do you know the timeline for the council to receive that and be able to digest it before we hit or we know it about the same time? Is that July 22?
I'm happy to provide the information to council prior to that. I think that meeting is on a Tuesday. So we could have the packet prepared to share prior to that.
Even a rough draft, fine by my standards, but that's great.
I have a question on the Camino Underpass project, if that's okay. Is Town Plaza playing cooperating now?
They, we haven't gotten to the part yet of reaching back out to them. I, our understanding is that they have had some changes in their upper management. So we've been given reason to hope.
I love hope. Hope is great. Okay, that was my only question there.
Town Plaza impact would be on the Durango Joes, that side of Durango Joes and down.
There'll be some right of way acquisition necessary to meet grade and have the correct ADA slope between the train and the highway there. We'll have to come into the Town Plaza property.
Backcountry going to be affected too? Am I in the right?
Property at this point, I don't think that there is, that we're anticipating any need to use that property for any.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, let me just ask one question. You think that C dot's going to be an issue?
C dot has been involved from the very beginning since it is right in their right of way. So they're supportive and they're helpful. As we're getting geared up, ready to start planning, they're going to have a really large role in the planning phase.
Can I ask when C dot has never been an issue?
Not while I'm standing here on the microphone.
I've got one other question. The Junction Street Miller Middle School traffic.
Yes.
Is Junction Street improvements at the end of it all, is is some of the design to try and improve that backup of traffic?
Yeah, we worked really closely. The multimodal staff worked very closely with 9R staff as they were coming up with their drop pickup, drop off flow and just kind of how traffic moves on their campus now. And a lot of the design is intended to improve those like site distance for turning out of the property and those type of things now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got a quick question. For the Camino Crossing, because we are working so closely with C dot, are we, will there be any cost sharing opportunities or grant fund opportunities?
Yeah, it's possible. And because of the nature of, you know, safety on the highway, this plan was included in our regional transportation plan for the, for our region. So it is a contender for state funding to help move people across the highway. So it kind of, it's a little bit different than a grant program. It is formula allocation that we share with the state and we get a percentage. So we're on the list for the allocation.
Gotcha. Do you know if they would be doing any sort of construction to do any improvement while we are doing that?
There's a possibility for overlap. And I think since they have been involved so early in the process, there, they did go and install the spaghetti medians as part of the access control plan. But I think there are some improvements that they'd be interested in making along with this project too.
Awesome. Thank you.
One last comment. I was at the first three of the next steps meetings. I thought both Devin and Clancy did an excellent job of taking the shots. Devin seems almost bulletproof sometimes. I'm sure that's not the case, but it was really well done. And I appreciate it. Yeah.
Public safety? Oh, wait. Oh, Izzy. Okay, sorry.
Good afternoon. Picking up with the 2015 tax and the Parks and Recreation projects. The projects that are bolded are the ones I'll be talking about in a little bit more detail. And then tried to pick the ones that were either ahead of schedule, behind schedule, or some of our larger projects to fill you in on. The three that are blue were all projects that had started previous year in 2024. And then at this point last year, we were bringing together our budget, had some funding available, thinking those projects would go farther into 25 than they did. Two of those are design projects that we were able to push through and finish the majority of that work in 24. And then the entry decon station, we had good weather up there. So again, we're able to finish almost all of that in 25 and take that out of the, or I'm sorry, in 24 and take that out of the 24 budget. So the first project we'll talk about is the Animus River Trail, Santa Rita Park to Albertson's. This project's going on now. We had 3.7 million in budget this year for that project. The the actuals a little bit dated at this point, but spent just under a million to date. Success that we kind of divided that project into two pieces really from the Highway 160 bridge up behind the Doubletree. We had to work with Doubletree to get easements. So I had some commitment to them to try to narrow down our timeframe, how long we'd be working back there. So we wouldn't disrupt their business so they could get the beer garden open and have people staying there without a lot of disruption. So one of our successes was just being able to stick to that calendar. That part of the project is substantially complete. We've got landscaping, irrigation, trail, that part. The picture here on the left is essentially complete. Some cleanup work to do. I'd say another success was just the detail route for that project. Trying to provide opportunity for people to still make the connection on the trail. Other places, we've been able to just do a side trail next to the River Trail. This was a significant difference between PIO, our CIP division, Parks and Rec did a really good job of communicating the message and it's been effective. And then the next success is the result of one of the challenges just down river of the 160 bridge. Contractors started excavating and ran into material, nothing solid underneath on that section of trail. We're trying to open up the radius where you come out. So you've got better visibility there and got into soft material. That's all built on retaining walls. So some concern with how to do that. Contractor was very effective and getting some additional boars done there. A plan B engineered, cost it out and going on that. We are, and then they got through that quick, but then we got into just at the same time that the river level was coming up and it was too wet to work there. So we did get a bit of a delay. They're back on that section now and working on it. The biggest challenge on that project has really just been the limited construction access that we have kind of a one way in, one way out on both sides with an underpass that you can't get a concrete truck or equipment through. So instead of a typical job where you have multiple trades all working in different areas and kind of following each other around, it's really start at one point, one contractor's in there, works so far, the next contractor comes in. And that's really the reason for the the long schedule on this project. The next project is the Lake Night Horse Entry and Decontamination Station. I know Owen provided an update on this a couple of months ago. That was prior to us opening the lake. The overall project budget was just under 1.9. So the 940 here was just what we had requested for 20 The overall project budget was just under 1.9, so the 940 here was just what we had requested for 25. But then, like I said, we got done sooner and just needed the 4,800 for completion in 25. But just again, getting that facility open. It's working great, very effective as far as the decontamination portion of it, the water recapture. There was a lot of frustrations with the old equipment and getting rid of those frustrations, having the right equipment, really increased staff efficiency morale. And we've also gotten a lot of positive public feedback up there this spring. So that's been great. The next project is the Durango Mesa Park Infrastructure. We had money budgeted both from the 2015 and the 2005 tax for 2025. That project includes the Highway 3 intersection improvements, the road from Highway 3 up to the top of the mesa and then the waterline connection from like third and eighth up to the end of the road section that we're building. So, so far that project is staying on schedule. We got through the work at Horse Gulch Trailhead, fairly short order with minimal disruption. Say one of the challenges there is just we've got multiple partners between the city, Durango Mesa, CDOT, coordinating, and definitely getting better since the beginning of the project, but a little bit of a challenge getting started there. So then the 2005 projects I have listed here, just jump right in. So the first project I talked about is Durango Mesa Park, the bike park portion of it. This one, we are behind schedule. There was some, a year ago, we were looking at trying to start this project, do some of the mass grading at the end of last year, early this year, as we got the road contractor on, on the project, started having some conversations with them. I got into the logistics of one, having access for another contractor too. There's a lot of cut material coming out of the roadway and realized opportunity to take that cut material, haul it to the bike park area so we can incorporate that and the mass grading will save us buying that material. So a, a large savings dollar wise, but it's pushed us out of schedule, so. I'd say along with that, we had another budget number for Durango Mesa Park, which was the Upper Bike Park. Go back here real quick. So this kind of violet shaped glob at the top of the screen is the Upper Bike Park. And that was a separate line item, budget item that we added for 2025. It's five new trails. So one's a connection from the Meadow Hub over to kind of the top of the bike park. There's an up trail which you can ride and then there's like a beginner down flow trail and intermediate advanced. And those trails have all been completed. They did a soft opening on those. We were looking at having a ribbon cutting for that here a week ago. We need some moisture to get those trails seasoned and kind of packed in. So with early June, we got some rain and then it got hot and dry again and then it started to get soft. So at this point, we postponed it just so we don't have a grand opening. And then two days later, same hand, we need to close these for a week until we get some rain. So this project went well and again, we were able to get this done ahead of schedule. And maybe a little bit of the upside to not making progress on the bike park is that Durango Mesa Foundation really made this a priority so that we could get another amenity open to the public. The Smart 160, we've got design for segment one and segment four, provided an update of this here a little bit ago. So behind schedule, still working with BLM and John Gilliland on, on trying to get this moving forward. So in process, I don't know. They've got a whole lot to update on that project since our last meeting. Still have had conversations with both, but. And then the next project we had was the Green Mount Cemetery Irrigation Phase One, which is replacing the pump house that's in the photograph here, which is where we pump water out of the Animus at Schneider Park and up to the cemetery. And then the water line, raw water line that runs from the pump house up to the cemetery. We're saying on schedule with caution. Our goal was to have work done this fall and then next spring so that we're, we can still have the irrigation window through the summer at the cemetery. So waiting till we are almost ready to close down irrigation this fall. We've run into a couple of issues with the, the structure. We're getting those cleaned up. Hope to have that out to bid here in the next couple of weeks, but it is a little bit later than we had hoped or planned on having it out to bid. So I think as we heard on some other projects, just concerned with if we get a response and then just where does that put us in the season? So. Those are the projects I had. So any questions?
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. So the Horse Gulch, the waterline connection is, is the waterline work that we're doing for, to supply water for the full build out at Durango Mesa?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty years from now.
Right now, we're putting in a, a water line that will sit empty until we get to a point where we have appropriate infrastructure farther into the park to, to finish the water line.
Great, thank you. Hub Trail, I actually got to hike it a couple of weeks ago and, and so Hairball and a couple of those trails, they look wide open to me, but you're saying that we, since I hiked it and saw it, you?
We're still have some of those open and not fenced off, but we just didn't want to be in a position where we opened them and then just still didn't work at any moisture. But I know the, the Blue Tail in particular, just it's getting pretty loose, so.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then Smart 160, not sure that we can answer this right now, but the, the concept there that we might be two years out still from having a connection there has been something that's been kind of mulling through my head. Have we ever had a rough trail? Like the full construction of the, the segment might take us two years, but we're able to negotiate with landowners to have just a rough connection so that people with mountain bikes and who really have the will can make that connection happen sooner than two years? Does that question make sense?
That, that does make sense. And I think we've got two property owners that I think we need to get both approval for a paved trail. And then also if we were going to do anything different, would it be the same alignment, different alignment? Have that conversation with them.
Okay, because we could go back and repair whatever when we did on a rough trail as we're working on the full trail. But I, I'm just trying to think of what we can do to maybe create that connection for folks a little bit sooner at three springs. So I don't know how that conversation might go, but I thought I'd take advantage of you being here right now, so.
I've got a couple if you don't mind, Mayor. You, you said on the Animus River Trail, there were some high water issues from Albertson's to the Senerita. Will, will part of that trail have any sort of high water issues? If water gets up to, you know, six, 7,000 CFS, would it, will there be any issues of it being underwater during high water? Or will it just more like the, the bank?
We are not doing anything with the underpass at this point. Just the, the, the bridge on top really sets that. So I mean, we can't go up without raising the highway bridge. So that, that elevation is staying the same and that work was still in good shape for the most part. So we've improved drainage there. That does over top probably about the 6,000 CFS point. That's still over top at that point, but from there on either side, it comes back up the hill and that'll continue. So no, we're not making it any different. It'll be better.
Not any lower than it is currently. Cause I, I knew there was always, you know, some sort of flux when it got to a higher level, but I'm glad we're not going lower and it's, you know, we're out for months at a time. The Durango Mesa Park Road, will that still be closed off after it's completed? Will that still be, have a closure and a gate even when it's completed to get up to the park or get up to Durango Mesa?
I think still kind of in flux and conversation, but at some point we'll get to where we have enough of a mass up there, recreation that we're going to want to open up to have vehicle traffic up there. Prior to that point, like some, next summer, probably would be closed most of the time so that it's just construction access and we don't have the public up where we're trying to do construction work.
Gotcha. And then we anticipate that being done this fall, late, late fall, maybe for the road?
Project?
Yeah.
Supposed to be completed this year.
Okay, great. And then so we anticipate, you know, and even into next summer that that access would still be closed.
Start working on, on bike park amenities. Yes.
Okay, great. Last one, the bike park, you know, kind of getting pushed back. Is there a new timeline? I, I think a long time ago, it was like 2026 we were going to start. Is that right?
So still looking, yeah, to dividing it up into multiple phases and trying to get some amenity each year. But that way it just meets our, our city budget a little bit better than what we had originally kind of laid out with Durango Mesa. But yes, looking for 2026, kind of really working at the base area and some more of the kind of beginner level stuff that would be down there at the base. And then we'll get into more of that once we get into our, our budget discussions. We've got that information.
And then the only reason I even bring that up is just we had, there's different international and national bike races that are going to be occurring. And so like what, what that timeline could potentially look like and making sure that we are able to share this great amenity for the people that, that do come for some of those, some of these events. So just kind of seeing where those timelines overlap. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor and Council, we are going to move one item up. It is for the prosperity office, kind of living with our motto of family first. Tommy's mom is having a retirement party at four o'clock. So moving him up on the agenda with hopes that he can make it there on time for the start. So just to let you know, we'll have Tommy go next and he's online.
All right, Tommy.
Tommy, you ready?
Tommy, can you hear us? Yes, thanks. My permissions just got changed and I can speak. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Jose, for bumping this item up. I'm here this afternoon to briefly touch base on our grant approval process for two grants that are going to be on tonight's city council agenda. If my slides could please be moved forward to slide four. The two grants that are going to be on this evening's consent agenda are the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Round Two. And then for the first time being brought to council is the Renew Grant. To brief city council on the Renew Grant, this is a dollar for dollar matching grant that the City of Durango offers to property owners within city limits for any sort of public facing property improvement. This is meant as a way to ease the burden on property owners when there are property improvements that are going to enhance the, the vibrancy and visual appearance of our city. And at times, I'm helping meet certain requirements like sidewalk repairs or repaving a parking lot, while at the same time, helping property owners take advantage of this to beautify the physical appearance of their, of their building and their property. Both of these grants will be placed on the consent agenda at tonight's regular council meeting. For the Lodger's Tax Arts and, Arts and Culture Grant, this was reviewed by a panel of five reviewers. They spent over 10 hours individually reviewing these grants and five hours as a group, making this list of 14 recommendations placed on your agenda this evening. The Renew Grant, this is reviewed administratively by staff with the, with the support of other internal divisions as required, such as the Planning Department or Engineering, for a couple of examples. There are two Renew Grants placed on tonight's agenda. And if you could please flip to my final slide, slide five. This just gives you an overview and a summary of the amount of funding and the number of projects. So Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture, there'll be 14 projects funded at just over $135,000. That will expend the remaining Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture budget for 2025. And then for the Renew Grant, there will be a total of two projects placed on tonight's budget for $9,000 total. And we have our full $45,000 Renew Grant budget still available, so plenty of budget to draw down. That's all from our presentation today. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have about either of these grant programs.
Yeah. Hi, Tommy. Thank you for the presentation. Did, there's like 200, less than $200,000 left in the 2025 budget. Are you going to do a second round like we used to do for this or?
Good question. So the, this, this is the second round. Our first round, we.
I get what you're saying. There's 135 available and you have budgeted now for that.
Correct.
Sorry, I'm not following.
The next, the next Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture round will take place in 2026. Where this pending approval tonight, we will have no more funding available for Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture in 2025.
Perfect. I love that we've tapped that out. And then the remaining budget in the Renew Grants, people can still apply online as always for more throughout the year, correct?
Correct, correct. Through the end of 2025. That's, that's a rolling grant. We don't have specific deadlines.
Excellent. Thanks, Tommy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tommy. So it's just sort of some general questions about the project that you mentioned. So any business that is forward facing is eligible for these grants?
Correct. For the, for the Renew Grant, any business that's making a public facing property improvement would be eligible for the Renew Grant. We try to use it as an incentive when businesses might be having a hard time paying for required improvements like landscaping or sidewalk or parking lot repairs. But we also allow businesses to use these for any sort of public facing property improvement. Signage, repainting, those landscaping, those would be eligible types of expenses.
Okay, and it doesn't have to be in a particular footprint?
The, originally, the grant program was designed around the City of Durango's character districts. Specifically, North Main and Camino Del Rio were the two areas that were originally targeted. Since the program's inception, the grant has been expanded across all of City, City of Durango within city limits.
That's great. And I'm glad to hear that. And is it a reimbursement program?
Correct. All of the City of Durango's grant programs are reimbursement based. So after the project is completed, they'll submit receipts, invoices and photos proving that the project was completed and they'll receive a reimbursement.
Okay, and I'm assuming that this has to, you know, pass all the sign inspections, historical inspections, all that is required? And is that eligible funding? For example, if one has to get a sign inspected, is that eligible?
Um, the, the, the material cost of the sign would be, to answer the first part of your question, yes. We, we ensure that all approvals are in place. And then the second part, the, the actual sign itself would be eligible. You know, the materials, the design, the installation, the, the permit costs that would likely need to be applied for prior to receiving the grant. Expenses that take place after the grant has been approved are eligible. So if, if grants are approved tonight, expenses starting July 2nd would be eligible. They likely had to apply for a signed permit or additional permits prior to submitting and receiving approval of a pending grant application.
Okay, and the grant comes from the Lodger's Tax. Is that correct?
The, the Renew Grant comes from the City of Durango's General Fund via the Economic Opportunity and Prosperity Budget. And then the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding. And then the lodgers tax arts and culture funding, that's a separate grant that does indeed come from the lodgers tax arts and culture fund.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Hey, Tommy, thank you. Is the process for grants to always review at the study session and be, and then be passed in the same day at the council meeting? That might, it's a process question.
That's how we've structured our grants. That's our goal is to allow study session time for discussing, answering questions, and then passing on that evening's consent agenda. And, and that's, uh, we've, we've attempted to make that uniform across all grant programs in 2025.
Do you have currently the 45,000 still in the renew grant? Do we have projects that are coming in that are getting rejected for various reasons? And we have a balance because of that? Or do you not have that many applications for the grant program?
2025, we haven't seen many applications. There aren't any grants that have been submitted that have been denied by staff administrative review. 2025 is just seeming to be a bit of a lower volume year. We have the second half of the year to try to market it a little bit more. We tend to use our planners as a great vehicle for that of, when you're maybe telling an applicant that they need to make a certain improvement, pairing that with a link to the renew grant to ease the burden on required landscaping or, um, uh, public property improvements that may be required by certain developments.
Makes a lot of sense. Good. I know Famburger is getting 5,000. They, they received the same grant category for the awnings not too long ago. Is that correct?
That was a Midtown Peak grant. That's a grant administered, administered by the Drango Renewal Partnership or the URA. Um, and that comes from the URA, the Midtown URA fund. But they, they did receive a grant in the past via a different grant program.
Okay. I, I think that block needs the help. Don't get me wrong. So I think it's fine. But just to note that we've done a couple of grants for them. And then I've got some specific grant questions, Mayor. I don't know if I should do those now or not.
The grants that were awarded, do you have questions on or the grant process?
Proposed to be awarded, yeah.
That would be during the meeting, you'd pull it off the consent agenda. And then in the meeting, you'd ask the questions on the specific grants.
Even relatively small questions?
It's up to you. I mean, it usually that's where it goes, but it's portion into it, we're bringing the grants to you. So if you want to ask the questions, it's fine.
Makes more sense to me to ask small questions. Okay. On the Native American Heritage Month, we've got 21,000 going there. Is, is that a, do you know if that's a partial or full cost coverage? The numbers didn't work out for me. If it was 500 meals and all the things that were included in that 21,000, can you just?
Sure. Yeah. So that was, that was our, our largest grant this round. And that was one of the only grants, the grant, one of the only grants that received their full highest tier of funding. Uh, and that's for an entire month of events. So, uh, within an entire month, they, they listed, uh, over 20 or 25 projects. Um, and this funding, um, they, they had a very thorough budget that outlined a week, uh, their events on a week by week basis. That will cover, uh, the, the majority, but not all of, um, their events funding over the course of that month.
Okay, great. That answers that question. The Animus River Trail PFD program, how are we doing PFD maintenance and theft replacement? Somebody's going to walk off with a PFD, I'm sure.
Yeah. Uh, you sound like one of our applicant reviewers. So the Animus Artisans team, they applied in round one. That was one of the questions that, uh, the reviewers after round one had after denying their request. And the Animus Artisans team has partnered with Four Corners River Sports to, uh, help with some of the ongoing maintenance, knowing that some of these will walk away. Four Corners River Sports and then Animus River Days have been two partners that they've lined up to help with some of those ongoing year over year maintenance costs to help with replacing PFDs, whether they wear out or whether they disappear.
Great. Love the partnership with the business. That's great. Last one, Sound Project. Uh, I know that the community can use the equipment. What's the process for the community to use the Sound Project equipment?
Yeah, um, they will have an online form, um, kind of an inventory of, uh, you have a calendar option, you have a dropdown form option of selecting what type of equipment you need on which day. And then, uh, the, uh, Jay Harutin and his team will help facilitate those pickups, the deliveries and the pickups of the equipment on those given days. So it'll be simple online intake form.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, we've got one quick question. If you don't mind, please. Tommy, and forgive me if you've already answered this question before. So the renew grant, um, if it doesn't get used up in the calendar year 2025, does that roll over to the next year? And is there a cap? Or is it an increase every year to put whatever money on top of what's already existing in there? Does that make sense?
Yes. So since this comes out of general fund and not a special fund like lodgers tax arts and culture, uh, it doesn't necessarily roll over. Uh, we request this out of the general fund each year. Um, and we plan to request, um, a similar dollar amount in the ballpark of $45,000 for 2026. But any unused funds would be subject to, um, any other general fund, funds that have not been used that fiscal year. Normally, we tend to get requests a little bit later in the year. We'll see kind of a natural peak in the fall. Once business owners start getting a better idea of end of year budget projections, work that they may or may not have been able to complete over the summer. But long story short, it does not automatically roll over to the next fiscal year.
It would just go into your general fund balance.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. And, uh, thanks again, Jose, for bumping this up.
You bet. Have fun.
Will do. Take care.
Tell your mom we said bon voyage.
Will do.
The next item on the agenda is the Public Safety Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem Mayor, City Council. My name is Bryce Current, the Chief of Police. And our strategic plan goals align with safety and quality of life. Our vision is one department, one community, um, one Drango committed to building trust, protecting the vulnerable and preventing crime. So in the next few slides, there's going to be an overview of the cost of the unhoused as was asked for. This slide is just using the numbers from code enforcement and Rangers first to gain an understanding. The unhoused related incidents have risen from a few hundred in 2020 to nearly 2,000 in 2024, not due to a growing problem, but an increase in proactive efforts. Since 2020, we've had 78.6 of the incidents have been officer initiated, aiming to address the camps before they grow. We've also pushed, um, community members to, uh, use reporting and engage with us with, uh, see, click, fix. Uh, before the Ranger program, many of the camps went unnoticed. They were deteriorating into the landscape. If you walked behind, um, you're getting some head nods right there. We've all seen it. Now both old and new sites are regularly found and cleaned up, contributing to the rise in those numbers and those incidents. So far in 2025, Rangers and Code Enforcement have handled two major cleanups, but we average about four a year, uh, each taking a full day and about 60 staff hours. This year, both of them were behind the tech center. The total cost for Rangers and Code, uh, was calculated at just over $120,000 a year in our system. And I'll explain how our system works here in a minute. Also, since May of 2024, we've delivered 71 truckloads, 322 bags of debris, and for disposal at a cost of about between 28 and $43 per truckload. So this includes the PD, um, the, the, also the officers included. And we get this through our Spillman tracking system. And so, and I'll explain how, um, this really isn't a good number, and then I'm going to get to a better number. So it's, it's almost impossible to capture all the indirect costs of homelessness at the PD. Nearly everything we do is somehow intertwined with addiction, mental illness, homelessness. And the incident codes are mixed up within the system, uh, depending on the charge. We have direct costs for contractors for cleanup, which was about $18,000 since 2020, which isn't a lot. And in 2020, we tracked almost 2,000 incidents in our system and over 4,000 incidents in 2024. So since 2020, the total was about 242,000, uh, tracked by incidents in our system, which we know is low and we're not tracking everything, um, using, using our system. And so since the fall of 2022, the sheriff's office had spent nearly a half million dollar on, dollars on private contractors for homeless camp cleanup, including after the closure of Purple Cliffs, uh, which is important to note. In contrast, uh, DPD has spent $18,000, like I said, since 2020, averaging about 5,000 annually, because most of our cleanup is done in-house. And so far in 2025, we've spent $3,400 in contracted services for the more hazardous camps that have been around a while and, um, that are hard to remove. Uh, we don't have an average yet for the abandoned RV toes, uh, which exceeds, uh, can exceed over $5,000 per tow, per RV. But we've partnered with community members and groups, uh, to reduce that number. So the sheriff's office recently purchased a dump trailer and a tractor, and we're using it, um, contemporaneously to clean up the camps that are close. We're now, um, so when we're looking at total cost, there's a, there's a simpler way to look at it. And then there's a more complex way that we're gonna, we're gonna use in the future. Our officers spend about 5% of their time on homeless, uh, issues per year. Our Rangers spend about 80% of their time. Code enforcement spends about 10% of their time. And then equipment, fuel and contract cleanup. And we're looking at about $210 per year, um, is the best number we're coming up with right now with, uh, and we know that number's low because we currently can't quantify specific issues like, uh, public indecency, open containers, shoplifting, costs for equipment related to homelessness. They only account for those actual crimes and don't connect. In 2026, uh, Drango 911 will implement a Spillman software upgrade to improve the tracking, where we can track it more precisely. And also we're developing a new data dashboard, uh, for more accurate time and cost analysis, allowing the public to see, allowing the public to report actually, and to pinpoint camps and to be interactive. And we're excited to present that dashboard, um, in the September study session. And I looked at it today and it's already calculating a lot of the cost. So moving on to automated speed enforcement and community engagement. So we've done a lot of engagement and members in several, uh, neighborhoods throughout the community are concerned with speeding. A common suggestion that has emerged from the conversations was the implementation of speed enforcement cameras within the city. The in-person town hall type events, we've had overwhelming support because we're able to engage and explain. We've reached out on online platforms and, uh, I know we're hurting, we're kind of pushing for time. So I'm not going to read all these since they were already posted. But the, the final weighted averages, um, and you can see some of these result surveys were 600 people. Another one was 447 people. The averages were about 50% in support, 11% neutral and 39% that did not support. So hiring more officers is an increasing, and increasing traffic stops is a common community request, but it's costly and it's not the only solution for speeding. Drango, um, officers patrol 120 lane miles, 83 city maintain, maintain lane miles and 37 C dot, which is 550, 160 and highway three. Speeding remains one of the top complaints impacting quality of life with noise, near misses, safety concerns, pedestrians and cyclists. And it's a very emotional topic as we all know. Uh, we have limited visibility and abundant greenery and numerous crosswalks. And our flock cameras recorded nearly 3 million vehicles, uh, coming in and out of Drango in the past 30 days. And that's not all the, uh, that's not captured in all of them. So as you can see, uh, traffic safety goals, and I won't read all these either for the interest of time. But our main goal is to create a lasting deterrent for speeding in our walking, cycling and our playing town. So the last thing I'll go over is our social media reach. Facebook, we have over 20,000 followers now and Instagram, uh, 4,800 followers. And we just started TikTok. So compared to this time last year, our department's digital presence has become a key tool for public safety and communication. From January to May of 2025, our content has generated over 3.3 million impressions, a 294% increase from early 2024. And public engagement rose from 580%. So we gained over 2,400 new followers, reflecting strong community interest and interaction. And the interaction is what's important. Even against our solid performance in '24, uh, the, the growth is clear. Impressions jumped from 900,000 to 3.35 million and engagements more than tripled. These metrics show how the community isn't just seeing our message, but they're engaging, they're learning and they're built, and we're helping build trust. This is active participation moves us closer to our shared vision, which is one Drango. Lot of information, um, open for questions.
Thank you, uh, for the presentation, Bryce. So let me, um, ask regarding the speed management and the cameras, do we currently have the software or the technology that we need to issue citations? Or, and like collect those funds and keep track of that?
No, we don't.
Do you know how much that would be? Is that an appropriate question for the moment?
Well, it depends on which, uh, vendor we go with. We've budgeted, I believe, $150,000 for it. And there's two types of vendors, uh, that we're really looking at right now. And, um, we're, the timeline for that is for after the, when the ordinance is passed, uh, we're going to look at that. One of them is more of a self-funding, uh, camera. And then the other one, um, would require payment upfront.
Okay. So we'll have some budget issues to discuss.
Right.
Uh, when the time comes. Um, and you know, given that we know that officers, in fact, it relates to the, to the unhoused issue that you discussed. There's been a lot of discussion in the community about just increasing enforcement in general of a lot of things. Leash laws, um, perhaps the unhoused, this issue is related to speeding. If we were to increase enforcement in each of these areas, do you have an idea how many more people you would need?
I mean, it depends on what you're talking about. If it's the, uh, open space trails or, um, speeding or they would all, they would all require different amounts of individuals. And then you'd have to determine whether individuals, hiring more individuals would be the best course of action, the most efficient course of action, because we're always looking for efficiencies. There are amazing, uh, technologies out there right now that we're researching with. And we're doing, we did two demos today on different things, um, that can increase efficiencies. And with the building and everything else that we're spending money on, we're really trying to look at the most efficient way to police the values of this community and the way they want them policed. You know, any community, you could, you could really lock it down with, you know, it just depends on how much money, technology and people you want to throw at each issue. And then balance that with freedom and, um, you know, also, you know, transparency and, uh, with the public.
Okay.
I, I, if you want to ask us about a specific on-
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about our upcoming budget, um, always thinking about the upcoming budget. And you know, where the most, right, like, um, potential return, um, you know, for investment. And you know, it seems to me like investing in those speed cameras would be appropriate. But, um, I think we'll have more time to discuss that when the time comes.
Well, I'll tell you, every time I ask for extra people, I'm always challenged to look at technology and look at other things as well. And there's a, and I appreciate that actually.
Yep. Um, the unhoused slide that you showed, um, in 2022, there was a shift in the amount of incidents that you are seeing. Was that a shift in your guys' approach, like a more proactive approach? Did you take like a new direction with the way you police Drango?
That's a great question. And with, um, and how I kind of walked you through how we get the data and how it's hard to get the data. Um, I'm glad that we're, we, we looked at a lot of different cities that are, that have these dashboards and a lot of the new technology that's coming out to be able to retrieve data from our system in and of itself and working with, um, dispatch and 911. It's hard to tell, really. It's hard to tell if it's going up or down unless we're just looking at some of the simpler methods of gathering that data. But I knew that question was going to be is a great question. And it's, I would have to say it's because of the proactivity. Our Rangers are out there spending all their time, eighty percent of their time, looking for camps and engaging with people. And as they engage with people, they learn more about camps, and they're encouraging people to report. And those numbers just keep going up, and we're going to have to continue to monitor those numbers and see where it goes and see what the reality is behind the numbers.
Was there a shift in your like mission vision values in two thousand twenty-two, or just a way that was it the camp of the Purple Cliffs the situation as well that?
I just think there's been more support from city council and from the community. And they showed that by creating the open space ranger position. I mean, it was sad to go behind the tech center back there and just see the literally camps disintegrating into the earth. And, you know, we have some amazing open space Rangers, and they work really hard, and they know everyone in the community. And when we ask them questions, they have answers. They know where all these camps are. They're aggressively going out, especially the abandoned camps and and hauling that stuff away, which is another incident each time.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, chief, when you're measuring an incident, that's just a contact. Is that correct?
Well, it would be where you get an incident number where there's actual work. Yeah, it could be a contact, but it would if it's a homeless situation, it could be them tagging a tent. It may not be cleaning up an entire camp or anything like that.
Because I'm trying to figure out where we're quantifying as like an incident per se, you know, is it?
Right. No, it's a good question, because a lot of the incidents are just contacting people and tagging tents and, you know, having more outreach.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bryce. And make sure you thank your officers and all your staff there for keeping the city of Durango safe. I appreciate it.
I will. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, next, mayor and council, we are going to take a couple of things out of order just to ensure that we have a people who do need updates that need to come through or done. There's some that are on the agenda. There are just updates that can be made. The first, the next one that we'll have is our environmental sustainability monthly report, as we have a special guest who is joining us to to do the report for us. So I will hand it over to Marty.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thanks for your flexibility here. We have with us today Anita Seitz, who is the advocacy director for Colorado Communities for Climate Action. And I, in the interest of time, I won't go off on all the reasons that I think CC four CA is amazing. But in my sustainability career and working in and around policy and and state and local government, I can say that CC four CA is incredibly effective, well-run and powerful organization. And when it comes to our larger scale climate work and how we are going to do more beyond our our city boundaries in the area of climate action, I couldn't be more happy to be part of this organization. So with that introduction, I'll hand it over to Anita, and she is aware of our time constraints here, so.
I've been briefed on the need for brevity. Hello, it's wonderful to be here. I am actually on a family reunion, and I am completely enchanted with Durango, as is every member of my family. They're actually on the river right now. My name is Anita Seitz. I'm the advocacy director, as Marty mentioned. But I'm also a former elected official. I served on the Westminster City Council for eight years as a city councillor, a mayor pro tem, and then as a mayor. And our executive director, Jacob Smith, was the mayor of Golden. Lyndz Lindsay X, who is our director of policy, was the director of environmental services for the city of Fort Collins. And I bring this up to kind of explain that CC four CA is deeply steeped in local governments understanding the competing tensions and needs on your budget, your time, your capacity. And we try to reflect that at the state Capitol. So who are we and what do we do? We are an advocacy organization. We're a coalition of forty-five local governments that have come together for the express purpose of pushing for stronger state and federal climate policy. And where do we do this? We do this at the state legislature. But that often the job just starts when you get a bill passed. So we follow it through at state agencies through the rulemaking process, making sure the legislative intent is recognized and realized in the eventual rules that are out in studies. When the state's investigating siting or land use, we want to make sure the voice of local governments are included in those as they impact climate. We also meet with our federal delegation. I'm actually going to be in DC next week. We'll see. The timing didn't work out quite as well as we had hoped when we plan the trip. It may be a little bit late. We'll we'll see what happens this Friday. But because we do recognize so much of local government and state government, climate work is dependent on some of that federal funding. We provide our members with workshops and trainings, science and policy updates and other resources. We're a big organization, forty-five local governments, as different as Adams County to Aspen. I think this speaks to the ubiquitous nature of the threat of climate on our ability as local governments to serve our constituents for public safety, for a vibrant local economy. Climate threatens our ability to provide all of that. This, I'm going to pause here for a moment. One thing that's really unique about CC four CA is we operate on a unanimous consent threshold. So forty-five different local governments, every single local government has a seat on our board. You would think my poor executive director, having forty-five board members, would have an impossible job. But because we are so aligned on this one purpose of climate, that is not the case. And in fact, it's one of the most effective organizations I have ever been a part of. And I don't know if it's because people who do this type of work tend to be kind, but it's also just a really great group of people. So we had, I know CML was here recently, and you've heard a big update on the legislative legislative session. So I won't bore you with too much. CC four CA reviewed over eighty bills. We ended up taking a position on fifty-one, each of those having a climate nexus. It says, one of the bills we got to monitor, which I'm still counting as a win, that's why it says fifty there. But of those, we were successful on all but nine of them. Success doesn't always mean getting a bill passed or killing a bill. What we focused on a lot was amending out provisions that would be highly challenging for local governments that may sound good, may even sound climate friendly, but would be very difficult for local governments to implement, such as the solar permitting bill was one that our members really struggled with. Another that we did successfully kill was a data center bill that would have given a twenty percent sales and use tax, I'm sorry, a hundred percent sales and use tax deduction to data centers for twenty years for everything from microchips to chips in the break room, something our state couldn't afford right now. As I mentioned, we also work at state agencies. I don't need to read this slide to you. I know it was all in your packet. But we work in multiple venues, again, making sure that the Air Quality Control Commission, the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, and more and more the Public Utility Commission here from local governments. We've been an intervener for the first time in our history at the Public Utility Commission this year. And again, we're seeing those as some of the largest levers, as we're seeing federal administration focus on climate dissipate. It's going to be more important that at the state and the local level, we continue to give it all we can. We were engaged with trying to connect our members and other local governments to federal funding, the unprecedented federal funding that was available through the BIL and IRA. And we were incredibly successful with that, helping our fingerprints were on both the climate pollution reduction grant that the state and the Denver Regional Council of Governments received, in addition to direct funding that went to many of our members. We are now switching into federal defense. And again, I know this was in your packet. It was a busy year. We're a core group of three. We have two contract workers, but we we punch above our weight. We get a lot done at the Capitol. We actually, state agency heads coordinate with us when they're thinking about policy ideas. We have made, there's not one piece of major climate legislation that has passed since two thousand sixteen that does not have our fingerprints all over it. I am happy to answer any questions either today or via email on any of the specifics here. I did want to take a moment to pause here on this slide, which is engagement opportunities for elected officials and really city staff as well. CC four CA's goal is to make it as easy for each of you to advocate on something you care about, maximizing the position that you have. So once we understand what your issues are, we will present you with different proceedings or legislation that Durango would be an important voice to have there. Marty has done an excellent job keeping the pulse of Durango, all of us aware of what's going on here in Durango, so we can have that echoed at the state Capitol. So we can have each of you testify at the Capitol in committee hearings on bills. We will register you, provide you talking draft talking points, fact sheets. We are on the phone with you as it's happening to let you know as as your time grows near. Regulatory hearings, the same thing. We can support you in testimony, both written and and public comments. Outreach to state and federal officials. If you'd like to attend meetings with us to meet your state delegation or your federal delegation, we're happy to help set those up. Some people don't like public speaking, even some elected officials, but they do like the written word. And so we will support you in writing letters to the editor or op ed so that you can have your voice and how a certain policy might impact your constituents in your local press. We have an annual meeting every single year. I'm not sure about these dates. We're kind of, but we typically have them around that week. So I'd encourage and invite you all to attend. It's the highlight of the year. If you're just curious and want to keep your fingers on know what what we're working on, sign up for our newsletters. And we have multiple newsletters that we send out. One is on engagement opportunities. One is on climate funding opportunities, and one is a roundup that just kind of gives a monthly progress report. What have we been working on? I hope I just spoiled the next presentation by giving you a sneak peek. I tried my best to be brief without speaking like an auctioneer, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there is time.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. I have one question. Okay, have you guys thought long term? Well, I guess your plan of action will be since the federal government already is thinking about getting rid of, you know, climate change funding.
Thank you, mayor.
The Senate passed the bill to the Congress, so.
I was reading through the provisions of that bill just today to see how direct pay is going to be impacted, because so many members have used direct pay for some of their investments. I think we're more important than ever with the federal government kind of receding in their support. It's going to be up to the state government for us to have an impact at climate change. I was looking through last night and today. You have a sustainability plan. You have a climate action plan. Durango is doing a lot for a community your size, and it's impressive. But to address this issue at the scale, we need to, we have to have the state rowing in the same direction. We are currently working on what we're calling charting our climate future. We're going to have a new governor in two thousand twenty-six. We're going to have a new state attorney general. We'll have multiple new members of the state house and the state senate. What is the climate platform that we think will help navigate us through these challenging days ahead? Specifically knowing that it's not even just the federal funding, it's things like advanced clean cars, the emission standards, rolling back California's kind of waiver. So it's a lot of the emission reductions that we had banked on in the state's roadmap to hit our statutory goals from the federal level are going to go away. So it's a good question. It's not an easy answer, but we're going to be really busy. Thank you.
Next up, mayor and council, we have Kayla with our recruiting marketing update.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Kayla Grimm, the human resources recruitment marketing specialist here with recruitment marketing update for the second quarter of two thousand twenty-five. And I'm going to hop right in. Our career page remains the top traffic driver on the city of Durango website, accounting for nearly fifteen percent of all website traffic for Q two. That's a one point seven seven percent increase from last year. To understand where applicants are coming from, we use unique tracking links on all of our external campaigns and any job postings. And our top traffic sources consistently reflect where we're focusing our efforts and any ad spend. Our time to hire for Q two averaged thirty-eight days, making us ninety-seven days faster than public sector peers. This is also five percent faster than we were averaging Q two of last year. We attribute these improvements to our use of technology, our expanded reach of our job postings and our streamlined onboarding processes. Here's a look at our human resources dashboard, and this is again comparing Q two of two thousand twenty-four to Q two of two thousand twenty-five. We're seeing positive trends across our vacancy rate, the number of recently filled full-time positions and our internal promotion rate. Additionally, we're posting fewer jobs on our career page for longer than thirty days, again, reflecting our success in efficiently recruiting and transitioning new hires into their roles. Our monthly turnover rate is down fifty-three percent from this time last year, currently averaging one point zero nine percent per month compared to two point three three percent of last year. And when we benchmark our monthly average against the city of Fort Collins, we're trending favorably. They were at one point six percent in Q one. I'm still waiting to see their Q two numbers. Q one, we were at one point four five percent. And then for broader context, the national monthly average for local governments is sitting at one point six percent as of April two thousand twenty-five. So that's looking great. Meanwhile, our cumulative turnover rate for the year is standing at six point one percent. And this time last year, we were at ten point thirteen percent. All right. And we are also seeing positive trends across our job posting performance. Our total number of applicants is up by twenty-five percent compared to Q two of last year from eight forty-five to one thousand fifty-four. Beyond just the volume, we're also seeing an increase in our average number of views per job, going from nine forty-three to one thousand fifty-nine. This combined with improved conversion rate is resulting in an average of over twelve applications per job. But to give you some context, our higher performing non-continuously posted jobs are are much higher. Some of our top performing jobs from this quarter included an open space and parks ranger position. We received sixty applicants within two weeks. Our budget analyst position received fifty-nine application applications in three weeks. A recreation supervisor received forty-four applications in two weeks. And we saw nice performance from our CIP program manager position. That's a pretty tricky division to fill positions for. They got twenty-nine applicants in three weeks. Looking, we had a successful recruitment season this spring. We attended Fort Lewis College's Spring Board Fellows Networking Event and connected with top graduating students. We were also at their career expo. I was there alongside Parks and Rec Department, Police, nine-one-one Communication and Public Works Departments, and we added thirty-eight students to our talent pipeline. We also attended San Juan College Career Fair with that same group of departments, added twenty students to our talent pipeline. And I wanted to give a big shout out to Ally Wilder and Parks and Recreation's Game Time Program, who attended each of these events, as well as Bayfield High School's Hire Me Fair, where she conducted interviews with students, which led to four applications and one hire for that game time childcare program and contributed to her division being fully staffed this summer. I also want to thank our IT department and capital improvement program division for participating in Animus High School's Link Mentorship Program. They each hosted one student for the three-week run of that program. And we hope to see more students shadow even more of our departments in the coming year. Lastly, we also attended Animus High School's Career Fair, where I spoke with junior and senior students about career opportunities in municipal government. And looking ahead to the third quarter, we're already planning to attend Fort Lewis College's Physics and Engineering Research Symposium and Career Expo. That's in September, and I'll be going along with the engineering division. And then I'm also participating in the Southwest Colorado Education Collaboration. Um, and then I'm also participating in the Southwest Colorado, Colorado Education Collaborative Sustainable Trades Workforce Partnership. It's a long one, uh, that's picking back up this fall and involves identifying workforce needs, skills gaps, and ideas for building the talent pipeline within sustainable trades within our region. So I'm excited to take part in those conversations. Um, and that is all that I have for today, thank you, please let me know if you have any questions.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry, can you just introduce yourself again and tell me what organization, what department you're with?
Yeah, my name is Kayla Grimm and I'm in our human resources department, my focus is on recruitment marketing.
Okay, and is it, um, is this always ongoing or is it like just a certain time that we're, are we always looking to fill positions?
This is ongoing, we're constantly hiring and this is across all departments in the organization, part-time, full-time, seasonal positions.
Okay, and can we go back to this slide where you talked about, um, how many positions are currently open and, um, perhaps you could review that data again?
Sure, so I did pull these numbers before submitting this for council, so it's not including all of our June numbers. I can give you more accurate what's going on right this moment, but, um, open positions are full-time open positions, we have eighteen.
Okay, I see here, now I see, eighteen full-time positions.
And the reason you see seventeen point three is we're averaging, so for over three months.
Okay, okay, I see. And, um, regarding seasonal, um, employees, do you reach out to the same ones every year? Or do we have a system for kind of recruiting the people that have always done that same job?
It kind of depends by department, with Parks and Rec, we do have a lot of employees that come back, um, and also actively recruiting. So like Ally Wilder, who I mentioned, she's hiring for game time and I, I have to look back at the numbers, but she was hiring quite a few. And she did have some returning employees while also going out to these events, trying to recruit, um, recent graduates, high school students who are available for part-time and seasonal roles.
Okay, and is there, um, is there a particular area that we know is really challenging to hire for?
I can definitely say that engineering is difficult and we are currently trying to hire a city engineer. And again, it kind of ebbs and flows with time of year, what the position is, other tricky realms. Sometimes our, our streets division can be hard to fill streets positions. We had a tough time filling our mechanic too, but are really excited. We did just fill that position with someone who's returning to the city. I've been in this role two years and I'm, I'm picking up the trends and patterns and kind of knowing where we need to be posting for different jobs, which is why I use those tracking links on each, so I can gauge performance if we are investing any money in an ad campaign, seeing what our ROI is and what's successful. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, thanks a lot for the benchmarking and the peer comparisons, I really appreciate that, especially this, this stuff doesn't necessarily automatically click in my head. So I like seeing the comparisons. I have one small question, what the multi-language program line on this slide mean, or, yeah, what this means, I am not familiar with it.
So we have our employees who speak multiple languages, um, we have them as resources for staff to use. And this means that this last quarter, and I will say that this is not concluding our numbers from June, so I can let you know if that goes up. Only one person has used one of our employees as a resource or translation services.
No need to follow up, I just needed to understand it, thank you.
No problem. Anything else? Something, thank you.
Thanks, Kayla.
Mayor and council, that pushes us at our four forty five, pretty close mark, so if y'all are ready to adjourn, we are good.
Missing library and airport, anybody else? Okay, got questions, just send them through to your office.
Sure.
Your chair, mayor?
Thank you, everybody.